I would like to put forward a motion at this point, please, to move the position of Mayor and Deputy Mayor. I understand that they can place it with the Chair and Deputy Chair. I understand that there isn't really any real difference between those two positions. Although within the past several months, there's been various things on various social media that people have standing saying that they don't agree with the position of Mayor or Deputy Mayor because it hasn't been done through due process and through an election. And they have also got some consideration that they believe that the Mayor and Deputy Chair hold some cost elements to the council where obviously they don't. So I just think on this particular point, it would be good to listen to the people of Stanley and replace all of those positions with the Chair and Deputy Chair. A second there. Oh, you feel it, thank you. Oh, sorry. I'm also going to see if people agree with that. Can you just keep your hands above your shoulders?
Yeah.
I'd like to nominate John Nicholson. I'll nominate Alison Ford. I'll say that. I take my job. I take my job. I wish you a nice day. Can I just thank everyone for that? And we'll move on to item two, apologies for absence. We have apologies from James King, working commitment. We have apologies from Gemma Holmes Wood, working commitment. We have apologies from Carol Hampson for medical reasons. And we have apologies from Brian Stewart for medical reasons. Can we all agree? Is yours sweet? Thank you. We move on to item three, declarations of interest. If any member has a declaration to declare, could they please declare it now? No declarations? Thank you. We move on to item four. Leader and Deputy Leader of the Council, councillor Tony.
I will lead the motion. I will move the Leader and Deputy Leader of the Council.
Thank you. Do you have a second there?
I have a second.
So that motion is seconded by Alex and proposed by David. Can we have short hands to agree that we move from the council the Leader and Deputy Leader? Thank you. We move on to item five. This is the election for committees. The first committee is Finance and General Services. The nominations from the independent group are here and the nominations from the Labour Group are here, all the nominations from the Reform Group here, yes. So we move on to item six on the agenda. This is the allotment committee. The nominations from the Labour Group are here and the nominations from the Independent Group are here, all the nominations from Reform Group, yes. Thank you. So we move on to item seven, which is the Policy Working Group. Councillor Tony?
Yeah, I'd like to propose a motion that the Policy Working Group is a minority in the HR committee to make it the policy in HR committee.
Thank you. Can I have a second of that? Thank you, councillor Tony. So the Policy Working Group, can we all agree that? Sorry. Are we all agreed? The reason behind the policy and the HR, all policies are relevant to our being. So it makes sense to have the policy group and the HR group working hand in hand. They all come back to the council for approval. So we move on to item eight. The Community Engagement Working Group. Sorry, we do have the nominations from Reform and from the Labour Group and from the Independent Group. So Community Engagement, councillor Tony. I'm here, so councillor Tony is here.
Yeah, I'd like to propose a motion that we amalgamate the Community Engagement Group and the Labour Group.
Can I have a second of that motion? That's good. Thank you. Have we all agreed? Thank you. This document will now move as the events and community to move. We move swiftly on to item ten. Item ten is attachments A, B, C, D and E. And they are four government documents. And the complaints policy, protection policy and publicity policy. Now, we'd like to propose that we defer these, that obviously because of some of the changes that have been made in the previous part of the meeting, that we need to have a look through these and obviously we need to go back through the policy group and allow it to be lifted up nicely. Thank you. Can I have a second there? Can we all agree? These documents are deferred. Thank you. We swiftly move on to item eleven, the report that the outgoing town meeting to receive a verbal report from Les on behalf of Carol.
Let's say Carol, massive relief with this statement, which will be part of the management meeting. And she would like to read here the medical problems that she has, that she can actually come to attend. And these are her words. As I reflect on my twelve months as Mayor of Stanley, words cannot express what I, what a great honour it has been to serve the townspeople of Stanley. It was a wonderful community full of interest and engagement and helping look on people through our community who have lived here all their lives, asked of their parents and grandparents and generations before them, others who have arrived here much more recently. But I believe very strongly that everyone of us belongs here and has something to offer. I would like to thank my fellow councillors for putting your trust and dignity in this undertaking when you elected me twelve months ago. I also thank you for our mates and town council staff who worked tirelessly behind the scenes and at all of the events to ensure everything was done seamlessly and hot as possible. And thank you councillor Ted for stepping in my shoes when I was unable to attend events. During this year, I have met so many welcome and wonderful people who have so many selfish, selfless, dedicated individuals, quality service and groups that provide valuable services to our community. I've had that great honour of representing the town at civic events and of course to host events such as the Mayor Award, where we are able to be thanked to individuals who have gone from above and beyond in our communities. By many treasured memories of this year, including the return of the commemorative surveyette which is now on permanent display at the Beemish Museum. This surveyette bears the names of all 168 boys and men who were killed in the explosion in 1999. This alongside the service of the Beemish and that was at West Stanley, had as a soul-revending poignant reminder to one of the worst mining disasters in Telkyn. And something we will never forget. On remembering today's services at Southmore Memorial Park and the beaten life in Stanley Front Street, again demonstrating our respect for those who have served and have served to protect us, I was proud to attend these in the capacity of a man. Seeing the faces of the children's lights up as a spark cleared the crowd on Front Street was a joy and I look forward to attending Christmas celebrations this year. I thank you all those who have attended and supported our events. May I offer my sincere and heartfelt thanks to the outgoing councillors who have served as council and the residents of Stanley. I know the hard work, dedication and commitment that has been so valuable. As we move forward, our newly elected councillors, I wish them every success in carrying out their duties and responsibilities to the residents of Stanley. It is now my pleasure to hand over the mantle to the new Mayor's Broad Chair, who I know will do a very good job of representing the council and the people of Stanley. Thank you.
Thank you, Les. Can I just say, she came on behalf of her parents. What a amazing job she did do and what you turned to the town council to do. And she was in a lot of places with a lot of things that people didn't see. And put in a lot of hard work for this town council. We move on to item twelve. Item twelve is an announcement from the incoming chair. Can I just say, congratulations to every councillor who witnessed it. Can I say, enjoy every moment you have time in this town council. It is an amazing environment here. The staff have struggled through on lots of occasions, but have come through stronger and more fitting for the area that we live in. Can I say, I'm not famous for not saying a lot of things, but tonight I'm not going to say a lot of things because I'll get sick of my voice because the agenda is quite long. But congratulations to every one of you. I hope you're doing a really good job because that's what the people of Stanley deserve. Can I say thank you to the members of the public, see you, for coming along to save the city? We move on swiftly to item thirty. This is the part, this is the public participation. Do we have any questions? There being no questions, we move on to item forty. Appointment to outside bodies and working groups. The first one is the local networks. Can I have nominations? Could I nominate John Cook, please? You can. Can I nominate John Nicholson, please? Thank you. Any more nominations? We will have a show of hands, which is the nominating process. So nominations, hands for John Cook. Nominations for John Nicholson. So I have been nominated to that post. Thank you so much. The second one is the seat-up executive. Can I have nominations? Thank you, Les. Are there any more nominations? Take it as read, then that will be me. We move on to the third one, which is larger local councils forum. Can I have nominations?
Can I have a nominee, so I can, because I think let's hope we can sit together so it's great for the purpose of the award.
Any more nominations? Thank you. We move on to packed house. Can I have nominations for packed house? Can I nominate Les? Thank you. Nominate Les. Are there any other nominations? Thank you, councillor Tony, it's you. We move on to the next one, which is the Stanley Fund for Pals. We have a nomination from Reform, which is Brian Querry. Have we any more nominations?
Can I just ask the Stanley Fund and Love Beemish and Stanley, are we still putting money into the Stanley Fund? I thought when they were at the last meeting that we had put the ties with them. Are we still putting money in?
There's usually more than one person on the Stanley.
Yeah, but there's one after that.
So there's three seats.
Three.
So can we have nominations for the floor, please? Can I nominate Sarah? Any more nominations? Can I nominate Susan? Yeah, sorry, playoffs. Please, Stella, can I just ask you to do me a huge favour and turn your cards so I can make a special show? And I'm not even sure I can see the other end, but yeah, they're totally. Well done, James. So how many nominations have we now?
I've got three.
Right, so we have three.
I'll nominate David Toole.
Councillor Tony? We have four nominations. So we will go into the vote. So councillor Brian Querry was the first nominee. Can we have show of hands? Councillor Helen Clark was the second nomination. Can we have a show of hands for Helen Clark? Is it four people on the three? Three and we have four. So I'm confused. So you voted three, so we'll vote for Brian, you now will vote Helen.
So you can vote three times?
Yes, you can three times. Thank you, councillor Tony, that is very generous of you. So we move on to Love Beemish and Stanley. Can I have nominations for Love Beemish and Stanley, councillor?
Can I nominate James King?
You can. Are there any other nominations? Can I nominate Christine Latchford, please? Are there any other nominations? Can we have a show of hands for James King? Can we have a show of hands for Christine Latchford? Thank you. So that nomination is James King. We move on to Armed Forces Champion. Can I have nominations for Armed Forces Champion? We have a nomination of Karen Austin. Thank you, councillor. Have we any more nominations? So can we have a show of hands for Karen Austin? Can we have a show of hands? Can we have a show of hands for David Tony? Thank you. David Tony, pass that. So councillor has requested to view that into working groups. Can I just say that the new committees of committees and not working groups, should we need to form a working group, we will form a working group. But at this point, we are full standalone committees. Working groups should be just for a specific piece of work and task intervention. We move on to item fifteen, scheduled meetings, attachment F, in your paperwork. Are we? Have we all agreed? Excellent. Can we all agree and approve this? Can we all agree that for the 18th of March 2026, that the annual meeting starts at 6:30? Can we all agree on that? Any objections? For those of you dating March 2026. Next two. We've got the 10th and then the 24th.
It has been the annual town meeting next year.
So it's May, it's not March.
The recommendation is the 18th of March.
So in actual order, it should read the 26th of March, not the 26th of May. So can we agree the dates? Excellent, and the title will be 6:30. We move on to item sixteen, subscription to outside organisations. All of these organisations are relevant to the running of the council. And can I say to you, they are all a valuable asset that this town council does need. But if anyone has any objections towards renewing all of these on lock, we'd like to see that. No one in disagreement? So item sixteen is taken as home. Thank you. We move on to item seventeen. Item seventeen is confirmation of council minutes, attachment G. So we need to approve as a correct record and sign the minutes of the ordinary full council meeting held on the 18th of March 2025. Thanks, Michael.
The rules are not true, that one.
Thank you, councillor. Thank you, councillor. So they are approved and seconded. Can we all agree? Yep. Thank you. We move on to item eighteen, sorry. The approval of the committee meeting, attachment H. So to approve as a correct record and sign the minutes of the Finance and General Services Committee held on the 11th of March 2025. Can we have someone who was on that committee? Councillor Clark, the person who is approved, the section, the ring. Councillor Clark, the person who drew the fraction of the reg. It has been approved and seconded, can we agree as a correct record? Good. Thank you. We move on to item 19. Now this is the multi band update. I'm going to hand over to Bobby, um, to give us the insight on this, this document that you all have. And I think everyone's ready.
Uh, we have the third report. Um, I'm lucky you've read it. And I'd like to ask if any have any questions.
At the end there's, um, an understanding, well, from what I understand, it's 10 orders a week. How much of the, how much stuff do you get? And will we need some way of, what if, and will we need to be able to correct it? Lot of, lot of questions.
And we all received, when appearing tonight, an inventory which the multi band has supplied with the thought. You might be interested to see the range of items that you can select. So you can get 10 orders a week. They would be through different organisations that would like to do it. Yes, they need to collect them themselves because it's, it wouldn't be possible for them to deliver from, from the city. If we're to guys who will have to. Uh, I think because it's such a frequent thing, it won't necessarily be a problem. People will order what, what it is that they require, whether that's for food bank or whether it's for an individual that might need additional support. Um, I'm sure that, that everybody can agree that within our, our residents, we have an awful lot of people living in our wards that, um, are struggling financially in that additional support. You know, we've got more than 10% wage pride within England. Um, and some of them come, and I don't like this term orgy, but they come under the term that behind statistics. Um, we have a huge amount of children living in, in absolute poverty. And, and so I think for those reasons, it's, it's, it's an interesting proposal that we can allow organisations to take the items that they want and collect them and distribute them to the families and to the families that need extra support. Is that answer, or do you want?
Well, if we have a paper that will be able to order and collect.
Well, it will be up to the organisations that, so if downtown houses, we would collect it. But if it's the organisations who might go and collect it, might be food bank, they would go and collect that themselves. They would order it themselves and they would pick it up and then distribute it to, to the families that require the extra assistance.
That's my point. I, yeah, I think it looks like a really, really good idea. Have we approached any of our partners to say we are interested in?
Um, very brief conversations because it was a, an idea that I was hoping to go through them to get permission. So yes, partners would be interested, um, because it's additional results that they could really use.
Yes, yeah, just a bit of the ability from actually going down, I guess.
Yeah, well, the people we spoke to were quite happy to go and collect it because of the amount of extra additional results it would add to. And, um, and it's, it's quite a, a simple process as well. They, they order their goods and then it gets processed, they get an order number and then they're sent a collection slot and they, they go and pick it up. And it's a really practical process.
So other than obviously the town council was to be agreed, other than then of us putting in the 13,000 to, to secure the goods, other than that, we wouldn't have any other sort of real involvement in it. We would be down to the groups that we would obviously count as, they would then place their orders, build their own goods, distribute their goods to the people of the city.
That's correct, yeah.
So there would be no additional cost to them on that mission.
Councillor.
Would all the schools in the area be near where it is? Because I'm aware there's a lot of children in the schools who, whose parents are the ones who have to know basically. And be able to, the schools would be able to get this out by the aid in, so that people are more aware of the struggle and, and so on. Yeah, that be the focus of the schools.
Uh, I think we would engage with the schools. Obviously we can't, we can't just be the schools because we only have 10 weeks in our scheme. However, there are also lots of organisations that work with schools. So they could maybe cover sort of multiple schools within that. And yes, I totally agree, it's really important that people aren't made to feel uncomfortable. There are so many families that need extra assistance. And I think we can definitely deliver this in a way that, that people feel comfortable with.
Yes. How was that? Did, have we budgeted from the previous council? Just in the individual political ways?
The budget is in the, we can choose to take it from the, from the.
Thank you. Are there any more questions? No more questions? You are required to decide and approve a recommendation for the chief officer to move. Can I have any more? It has been proposed by councillor Timby and seconded by councillor Clay. Can we have a show of hands? Thank you. We move on to item 20. The annual accounts and government statement. There are a number of documents, document J, K, L, M, N, O, P. So attachment J is the report on the annual accounts. Are there any questions? No questions? Can we agree? We move on to K, attachment K, the item 24, 25, the details of the result to see. Are there any questions? No questions? Are we all agreed? We move on to asset and land register, attachment L. Are we, are there any questions? Can we just take these on block? If you would like to take them on block, can I have a second of that motion? It has, can I ask everyone, are they agreeing that we take the rest of these on block? Can I have a show of hands? It has been proposed and seconded. Thank you, it is agreed, um, the rest will be taken on block. So that is L, M, N, O, P. Are there any questions? None? Can we all agree? Thank you. So we have approved and confirmed and authorisation is now for myself to sign. Can we agree that I sign on behalf of the council? We move swiftly on to item 21, review of expenditure under the overall government act 92, section 137. Are there any questions? We are asked to note the report. Thank you. We move again swiftly on to item 22, which is the date and time of venue of the election. The date is Tuesday 24th June 2025 at 6:30 at the Greenhouse Green Park. That closes our meeting for this evening. Can I say thanks to all of the councillors for their attention and to the public? Thank you for attending.